Keep it in our TV. Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting for March nine two thousand.
Twenty-three, call this meeting to order, first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded, so if you could be silent to your devices, that would be appreciated. First order up is public comments, do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none. Next one is recognition, and I will turn so.
We were in a submarine for a minute there. Something's still happening.
Alrighty, recognition tonight, we have with us Erica Murphy, I Director of Food Services, and on the agenda tonight, you'll see that Erica's been recognized, and we have a plaque for Erica and all the staff, and what it says here is a certificate of appreciation presented to Director Erica Murphy and the entire staff of Food and Nutrition Services for the North Andover Public Schools for being recognized by the National Chapter of the School Nutrition Association, and so, this is a big deal. Really awesome, we wanted to be able to recognize her publicly tonight, and what you'll see here is Trey Talk is, maybe I'll give Erica a chance to just tell us what Trey Talk is.
So Trey Talk is a Facebook page run by the School Nutrition Association, the National Chapter. This all started from school committee meeting that I attended in December. The Eagle Tribune ran an article, and then I received a phone call from the School Nutrition Association, they had read the article and wanted to do a follow-up, so they featured North Andover in their blog as well as on their Facebook page, and their written publication as well, so it was a great honor to be, you know, thought of enough to reach out to us and want to showcase some of the things that we're doing, and in addition to that, I've received quite a few phone calls from different food service directors throughout the country, Kentucky, Virginia, I'm just asking to pick my brain about some of the things that we're doing, and you know, it's been an honor, but I owe it all to incredible staff, incredible support system from the school committee and the administration, and you know, it's been great, it really has, and my staff is honored as well because they're obviously the backbone of this operation, and you know, we had a great summer last year, just brainstorming about some things, and this has probably been our busiest year, we have a lot of new things that we have introduced to the kids, and most of it is, you know, scratch cooking, the fresh fruit and vegetable line, and we just, we're starting the farm-to-school farm stands in two weeks out at the elementary schools, and then after that, we are launching the online ordering for the high school, so the pre-ordering, like a takeout program, so it's been a busy year.
And we will have Erica back, so this isn't her usual presentation, but I wanted to bring her in for recognition, and she's been a little bit modest, right, like so Trey Talk is like the Sports Illustrated of, like, you know, food services for public schools across the entire country, and you know, like, I still get like a magazine from Boston College, and sometimes the MASC sends me an email with their daily news read, but there's not a lot of print media left, so this Facebook page and the blog, this is big time, and so we wanted to get Erica and her staff here tonight.
Thank you.
School lunch hero.
Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Congratulations Erica.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, we have to approve the minutes of February second and February sixteenth.
So I'll move to approve the minutes from February second, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Picard, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, four zero.
I'll move, we accept the minutes for February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented in the packet.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Hicks, seconded by Ms. Picard, any discussion? All right, we'll call Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
I'm going to abstain because I was absent.
Okay, and I will vote yes, so that's three oh one. All right, and now we have our student report with Ben.
It's Ben, I'm a junior at the high school, first of all, congratulations to Erica for the award, the lunchroom does look very different this year at the high school, and I can say that a lot of students are ordering, and it's going very well, so first of all, most winter sports have ended, a couple highlights in gymnastics, Lindsay and Carlin placed in the state competition, Carlin actually won the all-state championship for floor, Ryan Connolly in indoor track set a new school mile record, and basketball is still rolling, both boys and girls, we are in the round of eight for both teams, the girls are playing in Andover on Saturday, and the boys are playing at home against Waltham, tickets are selling out, the games have been packed recently, and it certainly looks like these games will be as well, there's been huge turnout at the round of sixteen, the round of thirty-two, and the round of sixty-four games, it's been great to see the school come together in support of these teams, spring sports begin soon as well, a lot of teams have had meetings already, and practices start on March twentieth, the National Honor Society induction was last Thursday, over two hundred students were recognized for their academic and extracurricular accomplishments, the Spanish students have returned from their exchange trip from Spain, they were there for, I believe, two weeks, and it certainly seemed like a great trip, the mock trial season, a successful mock trial season, ended last week against Phillips Andover in the Lowell District Court, our very own Nora was on the team, she led it, sadly they lost, but I heard it was a close competition, the Scarlet Night, formerly known as Mr. North Andover, is next Friday, the seventeenth, we have seventeen students participating in the singing, dancing, all-around entertainment competition, the science team continues to dominate, we're currently in first place in the North Shore Science League with, I believe, eighteen other schools, and we have a competition on Tuesday in Billrica, guidance counselors are beginning to meet with juniors in preparation for college, it may seem like, it seems to me like, pretty far away, but it's certainly coming up, DECA states are today and tomorrow, that is where Nora is currently, she is in the Business Law Group, so good luck to them, and the SAT is on Saturday, we have a lot of juniors, including myself, taking it, so, and that's all for tonight, thank you.
Ms. Picard, do you have any comments or questions?
No, wonderful, thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
Good luck on Saturday at the SATs, get good sleep tonight, not tomorrow night, well, tomorrow night too, but also tonight.
I was just gonna say the college search will seem a lot more real on Saturday morning when you roll in with two number two pencils, or whatever you guys are taking with right now, and the only quick thing I would say, one great report, I think the girls are playing on Friday night and the boys are playing Saturday, and I think we're playing at North, we're playing at Andover.
Yep.
Or South Andover, as they say, and where are the boys, are we?
Boys are home against Waltham, I believe at five thirty.
Okay.
But both games are selling out, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's limited tickets that are out there, and then finally, just congratulations on the National Honor Society, it was a great, great ceremony, and I think you may have been the first member of the class of two thousand twenty-four to be inducted in, so congratulations on that as well.
Thank you.
The luck of the A's, I guess.
I will echo Mr. McDevitt's comments, congratulations on the Honor Society and good luck on the SATs, and thank you, as always, for a wonderful report.
Thank you.
And I know you'll get a nutritious lunch at school tomorrow, along with the sleep.
All right, Dr. Gilligan for the superintendent's report.
Terrific, with us tonight, we have Rick Alott, wonderful community programs director, and Rick's here to provide his annual update about some of the terrific things happening with him.
Thanks for having me, given me the opportunity to be here to talk about our department, community programs, it's been a while, I haven't seen everybody's face in a while, so nice to see everybody, gonna give you a quick overview of all of our programs that we ran this year, how they were enrolled, things that we did differently, things that are new to community programs, and feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions, I'm used to being interrupted, so it's not a problem, but this first slide you'll see, this is just gives you an overview of the enrollment at all the programs that we've run thus far up into the school year, and what I'll do is I'll kind of go through each one individually and talk about them and what those numbers represent, so on that next slide you're gonna see is our before and after-school daycare program, I always, this is our bread and butter because this is the bulk of the work that we do here in the district, it's the most in-depth piece of programming that we offer, we have thirteen locations throughout the district, five, I'm sorry, six in the morning and seven in the after-school program, so it's quite busy before school and after school, and everyone's still asleep in the morning, and going home in the afternoon, we're still working, so in terms of our enrollment for these programs, I think last time I saw you, we were coming out of a pretty dark place with the pandemic, and I'm happy to say that we're slowly growing our enrollment over the last year and a half, we're not quite at pre-pandemic levels yet, which I don't think we ever will get back to, and that's just to the fact that the workforce has changed, a lot of people aren't going into the office anymore, they're working from home part-time, or they're working at home full-time, and the need for full-time after-school care isn't as much of a priority as it used to be, but we're in good shape, we have strong enrollment, and we continue to grow, so that's great, one thing we did notice though, coming out of the pandemic, was that staffing became an issue, a lot of people were prioritizing their personal lives, our jobs are mostly second jobs for people, they're not their primary source of income, so what we saw was a lot of people saying, you know, cutting back a little bit, not maybe working as much as they had done prior to the pandemic, and kind of scaling back, so that posed some challenges for us in terms of finding staff, but we got creative, and we were able to find people here and there and fill in holes, and I'm happy to say that we're pretty much fully staffed right now across the district, which is great, that next line you'll see have Merrimack College interns, I was recently just speaking to our interim SEL Director Michelle O'Leary, and we were kind of going back and forth on a few things, and she had mentioned that, I believe there was a homework tutoring club at the Woodridge at one point, I'm not sure that's still going on anymore, and they had Merrimack kids that were volunteering their time for that program, and now they're looking for more opportunities, and so, I think it's a win-win for marriage right here between us, so we're being connected with that group of kids to come over and volunteer their time with us, which is gonna be great, recently, we just had our annual CPR certification, so our staff was recertified over two nights back in January, thank you to Cheryl Barzac and Kathleen Pease for offering their time to do that, as we all know, watching that Buffalo Bills football game this year, that's an invaluable skill to have, so we're happy that all our staff have that, and this Saturday, we have the MAA EYC, which is the Massachusetts Association for the Education and Young Children Conference, and a number of our staff will be participating in that on Saturday, March eleventh, which is great.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Go right ahead.
Are you able to accommodate all the folks that want to have before and after-school programming?
So right now, we do have wait lists at three of the six after-school programs, okay, and it's not because of size, it's because of staff, so we're only required, allowed to take a certain amount of kids based on them or staff that we have available, so if we have, say, six staff members, we can take up to thirteen kids for each staff member, and then that's what that number cuts off.
Before we had the programs at all the elementary schools, we did have some kids who were able to come to one elementary school and then get bussed over to the other, are we doing anything like that at this point?
So we don't do that anymore, previously, what would happen was the Franklin kids we could bust over to Thompson, and they would all be together, and then we had the Kittredge kids bust over to Atkinson, and they would be together in one site, when we realized that we had enough kids to support at each individual building, we kind of stopped doing that some years back.
So if there were, if there were extra spots at one school?
You mean, could there be transportation provided for them to get to the other school?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it could be a possibility, but I will say, transportation is a very
Yeah, no, that's the thing right now.
So yeah, that could be a problem.
So do you know how many people are on the waiting list right now?
Yeah, I don't, top of my head, no, but it's, I will say this, every month, we do re-enroll families from the waitlist, and we have offered many spots up each month, and a lot of people have declined, and have requested to stay on the waitlist because they wanted to utilize it for next school year, so the number is deceiving, if you look at it, it may say ten people, but we've probably offered of those ten people, six or seven people spots, and they may not have taken them.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we'll go to the next slide, good, thank you, so this is the fall and winter youth enrichment classes, I'm happy to say, these enrollment numbers have pretty much picked right up where they left off before the pandemic, and these programs are what you see in the art enrichment brochure that goes out every session, where we have thirty to forty programs that we offer, they're week-long, they're day workshops, whatever they may be, there's a variety of art programs, STEM programs, recreation programs, gym classes at all the buildings, and those do really, really well, and we're happy to say that those are back to where they were before, one program you don't see on here is the ski club, we were able to bring that back this year, we, it's been a couple years since we weren't able to do that, and one was because of COVID, and then last year was because of transportation, we could not find buses, there wasn't enough drivers out there to accommodate us, so this year, we're happy to reach an agreement with the bus company and be able to offer that program, and it was fully enrolled like it always is, so it was great to have that back and be back to a little bit of normalcy there, another new program that we're offering is called Role Models, and this program is out of Newton, and it's a group of guys that have developed their own D and D Dungeons and Dragons games, this is something that's not really in my wheelhouse, but these guys are really great, and they love it, and they're super adventurous, they've created, they write their own stories, each session is its own session, each story is its own story, so the kids can come in anytime, go through it, and then start a new one in the next session, if they don't do the first one, they can always pick up on the second one, it's new to everybody, and they've been great to work with, and they already have like a cult following of kids that are enrolled in this program, so that's great to see, another new program we offer this year is inclusion sports, this program is for kids with differing needs and abilities that may not have otherwise been successful in a traditional sport setting, so what this program offers is a chance to learn a sport in a smaller group, it's taught by physical education, sorry, physical education teachers with a behavioral background, that are able to introduce a sport in a more conducive setting for them to be successful, and we ran two sessions of that this year, and they both sold out, so we were very happy about that, and we're hoping to bring them back again next year as well.
Is that one sport per session?
Yeah, so the first, yep, so the first session, they did soccer, and the second one, they did baseball, yep, so it's pretty specific to a sport, so they can have some time to learn through it, it's four Saturdays they did it over, which was great, it wasn't a long-term commitment for a lot of these kids, so it was good for the parents to be there and see it, and pick up on the skills as well, to reinforce that at home when they went home, and another program you don't see on here that I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it because I was just over there before I came here, is Destination Imagination, I'm not sure if you've heard of that before or not, but it's a really big organization in the state, across the country, for that matter, and we have four teams that are participating in the tournament this weekend in Beverly, and we're excited about that, we're sending four teams there, I'll be judging all day on Sunday at the tournament as well, so I'll get a chance to see our kids in action, and congratulations to them for working really hard this year to get ready for that, for that tournament.
Rick, are you still doing elementary band and instrumentation?
So we are not, we didn't do it this year, we are gonna bring it back next year, what happened this year was, we ran into some issues with staffing with that program where some people were willing to come back to teach in person, some were not, so in the past year and a half or two years, we've been operating that program virtually, so the lessons have been done at home, and it was mixed reviews, some people really liked it, they enjoyed it, they thought it was great, some people felt like their kids weren't really picking up on it through a computer screen, so when we tried to bring the program back this year, we had lost some of our teachers because they weren't willing to come back in the classroom yet, and then we didn't, we tried to play catch-up, we didn't get enough people in time to run that program, so we did take a step back, and we talked to our band directors, and we tried to figure out a way to make this program more accessible to everybody next school year, I think another issue that we had was we were running some lessons before school, which wasn't really great for a lot of kids and families getting up early to drive to a school, do a lesson, and then have to go back to another school.
You did, I know what it is.
You did it, you know, right, so I think we need to make a change there too, and try to centralize it and make it more accessible to people, which is what we're gonna be working on for the fall.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I think that'd be great, I think one of the limitations of that particular model is that if a parent is using Breakfast Club programs at one of the other schools, there's no way to get their child.
Exactly.
To the other building for those music classes, and yes, I imagine virtual music classes are quite difficult, you have to actually show kids where to put their fingers on things, right? And I'm just wondering, what are the other models that we could explore, I know there's budget implications from some of these things, but is there an opportunity or a way we could start thinking about putting music lessons in during the day with, with our elementary kiddos of the fourth and fifth grade, and exploring what a model like that might look like, which is a much bigger.
Yeah.
Thing, but.
Yeah, so in terms of during the school day, that's probably outside of my, my parameters, but in terms of after-school, the things that we discussed were having it done in a central location like the high school, or at the middle school, and having it done after four or five o'clock at night, where kids can go home, get a snack, do what they gotta do, and then come back and have a lesson, and try to keep it in one location and make it accessible to everybody equally from around the district.
Just one other thing, Mr. Hicks, when you talked about budget constraints.
Just a clarification, community programs is self-sufficient.
Yes.
And so, they will generate the revenue, and the revenue will pay for the program, so if they have enough participation, it can happen.
And there's also scholarships though, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yep. That's good, so we can move on to high school courses, we are offering driver's education this year at the high school with the Community Driving Academy, it's been a really great partnership so far, we have a class starting on Monday, so if anyone out there is looking to sign up, we still have space available, go to the website and sign up, SAT prep classes, I know our high school liaison was just talking about the SAT prep, we have our last class tonight, leading up into the exam, and the great thing about our SAT classes is that we schedule them so they lead right up into the exam, so the kids will take, I think it's eight classes right up until the date of an exam, the day before, or two days before, so that's still fresh in their mind, and they're ready to go on that Saturday morning, and again, the last class for that is tonight, and then we have a session starting in late April for the May exam as well, the College Reading and Seminars, another program that's very popular with our kids, this program is great, it's with our guidance counselors and some English teachers, they help the kids work through the common application process, their essay, they edit the essay, they help them work through that, get some one-on-one attention, they work on their senior checklist, basically everything that a parent who's overwhelmed with their own child at home doesn't want to get involved with, we can offer that at school, I have a daughter who's a junior now, getting ready to go to college next year, and that's already, I mean, apply to colleges, and so I can just imagine, she needs a program like this, because I need to get away from it sometimes, so that's very popular, and that's online to register right now as well, and it does fill up very quickly, so if anyone's interested in that, I would suggest you go online and register for that, and then, of course, we have Academic Summer School and Credit Recovery, that information probably will be available in early June, we don't have much information to share on that yet, but that will be another thing that we offer at the high school.
Rick, do students need to be enrolled in North Andover Public Schools to be part of community programs?
So the only program we require them to be in school for is the Kid Stop or Breakfast Club programs, any other program that we offer, a student can attend from outside the district, or if they're homeschooled, if they are, if they're different school in the district, they don't even live in North Andover, they can come to our programs.
Okay.
Yep.
I assume if there's a waitlist, then folks that are in North Andover are prioritized.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
And for the most part, our enrichment programs don't really carry waitlists, some of them do, some of them are pretty popular, and they will fill up, but in that case, we try to add a different section or another section to that, so we can accommodate those people.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next is something new to community programs, is adult education classes, and with this, having spent twenty years of my career working with pre-K through twelfth grade students, this was new to me, right, and it was a steep learning curve over there, and what I usually do when I have to face a new challenge is I try to go to people that have been doing it for a long time, and I pick their brains to find out what works, what doesn't work, what are best practices, and so I did that, I went to meet with CNET, which is the Community Education Network that I belong to, and that's a group of public school people just such as myself around the state who offer these kinds of programs, and I learned a lot, I learned a lot of different things, and I learned how things are different in different towns, and what affects enrollment, and the one main thing I took away from it was that it's a very volatile market industry in terms of adult education, it changes from year to year, some years, things are really well-enrolled, some things don't get enrolled at all, and then it flips the next year, so it's just really about, and one thing I did here too, which was pretty common, was building a strong base, and we find that with our other youth programs, we build a very strong base within the community of families who know what our programs are, what they're all about, they know what to expect, we get many phone calls and many emails, when is this coming, I can't wait for that, so that it kind of gets ingrained in the community, and we need to build that here with the adult piece to make sure that grows and flourishes as well, and that's what I heard from other communities was that things they've been doing for a long time, they build a strong base, it's known throughout the community, and that's how they sustain it, because one thing that was told to me, which was pretty shocking, was that between thirty and forty percent of programs get canceled every session, so they may offer twenty classes, but almost half of them may get canceled due to low enrollment, and that was even before COVID, so it's definitely a finicky business, so it's really being, you know, intentional and strategic about what you offer to make sure that it's what people want to see, now it's for us to find out what works, what's gonna work, what people want to see, what they want to take, what they want to participate in, and then kind of build off that, and that's kind of what we're doing right now, and I think another thing that was interesting to find out was that regionally, things in a certain part of the state were more well-enrolled than other parts of the state, and communities that had programs adjacent to another community that ran a program as well, how they fought for enrollment, and how that was something that was an issue as well, so we learned a lot through that process, and we're still learning, we're still trying to figure it out, and also, there was another component that was interesting, was that the over fifty-five and sixty-year-old community had stopped coming out to a lot of these programs, and so, they started switching to more online and virtual options for these people, so that they would still be able to connect to the community and not have to come out into public buildings if they still don't feel comfortable doing that, so we started to do some of that as well, and I'll explain that in a minute, as you can see, the next line says, combined with, I'm still on the first slide, I'm sorry, jump to the previous slide, you'll see combined with other towns, what we've done is, you know, we may have a class that's pretty interesting, and three or four people sign up for it, but the instructor doesn't want to come out just for three or four people, it's not worth their time or money, but if we combine with another town who has three or four people, we can combine them together, and we have a class that can run now, so we did that with a couple of our sessions, classes this session, where we combined with, say, Arlington and Reading, and we all brought two or three people to the table, and we were able to run the class, so that's been a good resource for us to continue to offer classes, and even with low enrollment, without having to cancel anything. In terms of our community support, I've reached out to Deanna Liamler at the town, she's our community outreach coordinator, and she's been really a great resource to me, she's gonna help me with our spring session, trying to get this word out to more people, she's got some back channels she said she can help me utilize, that'll get this word out to people, and maybe start spreading the word amongst the community that, you know, these are here for people, that's a good option, it's a great way to meet people, it's a great way to, you know, interact with people you may not see every day and feel part of a community, so she's gonna help with that, which is great, and we're also planning to do an end-of-year survey to find out what people liked, what they didn't like, more, more so what they didn't like, we want to find out what we didn't offer that they want to see, have a suggestion box, you know, try to find out if we can, you know, accommodate that, and make it more accessible to people.
Just quickly say on that, I mean, everything is great, how people want to be notified and informed of some of these, right, so I'm looking, you know, at the winter classes that are here, and I'm thinking, and maybe I knew some of them, but I did not realize all of them that are here, so like, what am I missing from a communication perspective?
So yeah, we certainly do do a better job of that too, and so what we had done last year was at the end of the school year. So, yeah, we certainly need to do a better job of that too. And so what we had done last year was at the end of the school year, we had a survey. And we created the distribution list of people that responded to the survey that were interested.
Okay.
That indicated strongly that they wanted to participate in these programs. So we targeted those individuals. I think it was close to like 800 people.
Great.
And then we, and again, we blasted through the district, through our channels as well, throw it up on the website and hope that it gains traction, right? I think we need to utilize some more channels. That's why we contacted Deanna to help with that. The other issue is that, I mean, you all live here in North Andover, but in other towns, you may get a booklet in the mail that shows all these different programs they offer. And the one thing I learned from all these other people that I met with was that those booklets cost a ton of money and a lot of them get tossed in the trash.
Yeah.
So a lot of them are trying to move away from that and go digital, right? And we need to do a better job of maybe utilizing social media, social media to get that word out that way. Because I think, you know, it's thousands of dollars to do a print publication and get it out to every house. And if you're not seeing the return on the enrollment, it's almost like throwing money out the window, right?
Absolutely.
So let's try to do a better job of being, you know, intentional about how we send the message out to people. Deanna's going to offer a great resource to us, but I think also using the social media probably in the future is going to help us do that as well.
Yeah, I just think that would be something to include in the survey because
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that is going to be one of the questions.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And we, actually, we want to find out all the things that we did wrong, right? So that we can improve upon them and make it more accessible to people. And that's kind of what the hope is.
Awesome.
Do you, with all these, but particularly with Adult Ed, do you coordinate with the Senior Center and the library and?
So, yeah, we've sent emails out to ask people if they're interested in participating, if they want to get involved, right? And this is where Deanna's going to come in and help us with that. But the Senior Center, no, we have not had a relationship with them yet. But the Historical Society, we met with them.
Yeah.
And the summer programs that we're going to partner with them coming up soon, that's, that's great. But the library is not a resource that we've tapped into yet either. So hopefully they can be of service to us to get the word out.
I should feel like a lot of these organizations are trying to do similar kinds of things and similar markets.
And the one thing about North Andover that's really unique is there's a lot that's being offered to the community, to the residents that live here, to the youth, between the youth center, the recreation center, the senior center. There's so much opportunity for people here. It's great. It's great. I think, but we all battled for trying to get the word out to the people, right? And get it so that it's noticed. Because again, I mean, I even, I suffer from it at home. I get home, a long day, I get the mail, I see a pamphlet from my recreation department, I look through it for a minute and I throw it somewhere and I don't see it again, right?
Right.
And so we want to make sure that it sticks in people's minds, that it's there and it's a, it's a resource.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is a list of classes that we offered this winter. We ran pretty much all of them except for three, which was great. If you want to switch to the next one, this is the spring session coming up. This is going to be opening for April 1st. And we try to be really, you know, thoughtful about programs that we offer during the spring session. Things that kind of, you know, are meant to be done in the spring, like we, the nature hike program is something that you know you're going to be doing outside in nice weather, the gardening program. And real estate, we heard was a big one, was that in the spring, real estate heats up. People selling houses, buying houses. So we're going to offer a couple workshops to help people learn how to buy and sell a home, how to stage a home. Modifications you need to make before you sell, what you should do, what you shouldn't do. So there's a lot of great programs that we're offering around real estate that hopefully are helpful to people. And brunch classes, that's coming up soon for people. Maybe having brunch would be great. But these are all programs that we think should be successful this spring. And we hope to see a boost in numbers when we put it out there on April 1st. Any questions? And I know I'm talking a lot. I'm sorry. And the last one is our summer youth programs. We do very well in the summer. I mean, and I'm always shocked because of the youth center having a summer fund that's being offered and we work together. It's, it's great. We always do really, really well. So we're going to be offering all of our sports clinics and leagues again this summer. Camp invention, which is hugely popular with us. We get over 100 kids from a bunch of different towns every year to come to that. A new program this year is Top Secret Science. We're excited about. They're going to be coming in here and doing a week-long program where kids will make and take something home every single day. So that we're excited about that. And then just the standards of Tiptoe into kindergarten and just a number of different art classes and STEM classes that we'll be offering this summer. And that will be available on April 1st as well. And that is all that I have for you tonight.
Do any of the members have any questions or comments that were not already asked?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, my, my son has been a big fan of Ski Club.
Great.
Particularly the bus
Yeah.
with the bathroom.
The buses were nice this year.
They were very impressed. And role models. He's really enjoying his time on Friday afternoons with that one as well. So thank you for those programs.
Great.
He appreciates them.
I'll just say quickly, I think I say this every year, but, you know, I think when my oldest started, it was probably 14 years ago and, you know, it was a flyer that kind of came home, right? And to see
One page.
Yeah, one page. And I think we were excited when it went to the back, right? But to see this today and how much this has grown and the number of kids, and I think it was the second slide perhaps that you had of just participants that are there is absolutely fantastic. And including adults and some of the other things like driver's education, which can be very difficult to get into and things of that nature, you know, is absolutely fantastic. And I think it was about a year ago, there's a school committee listserv page. And somebody was asked a couple of different questions about something. And I ended up having like really, like, I don't know, probably like three or four different calls with people, you know, school committee members from other communities. And they were just amazed at like what we were doing. I was like, okay, you just got to look at this page and like your answer's like right there. Like, I mean, because so much information was there and so many, and they, they could not believe the things that we offer to, to our students before school, after school, you know, summer months, you know, some of them, I think, vacation weeks and then, and then adding in adults, which I think is probably about two years.
This is our, we've just started late spring last year. This is our third session.
Okay, third session, okay. So this is in our second year. But, I mean, just absolutely fantastic. And, you know, there's so much to love about this community and, you know, community programs is absolutely one of them. So thank you for all of your leadership, for you and your team who support all of these.
I couldn't say enough. The people that work for community programs are just gems. I mean, they are the salt of the earth. They, they show up, they work hard, they do what's best for kids, and that's all we can ask of them. So without them, none of it's possible. So thanks to anyone who supports us and participates.
Great. Fantastic. It's always fantastic. But thank you for coming in, Rick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, just a note on that. I ran into a parent at the PTO president's meeting. We did the last session and the session before. And they were talking about how they were getting back into the workforce and they had been taking some of the Adult Ed courses. And said they were terrific. So really exciting. Dr. Mealy, do you, would you like to take the next one on the MSBA update?
Sure. We have completed the fifth and sixth deliverables now that we do on February 28th. The enrollment certification has been executed. And the maintenance and capital planning information was, that report was created and submitted. The la, the last two items in this phase of the program, the local vote authorization, which actually took place at last town meeting. So that's already been completed. And then the feasibility study agreement is an agreement that they generate and we signed. So pretty much phase one, we've done all the heavy lifting. And we'll be completing that, as you can see, end of May, and then moving into the next phase. So right on schedule.
Awesome. I want to turn it over to Mr. Hicksy.
There's a little happy Kitchard dance there. Middle School Building, the, on the agenda, it says April 14th. We're actually, it's April 11th, sorry. There's a meeting on this coming Tuesday, March 14th at 4:00 PM in the middle school library, and the agenda should be posted tomorrow. So.
Is there a reason that was moved up?
I haven't gotten the agenda yet. There are some things we need to do sooner than later as well. Oh, yeah.
I know Michelle's probably watching at home. We can make that change with the, the meeting moved up and have that posted. Awesome. Couple exciting opera approvals, the American Rescue Plan Act by the Select Board. One was for funding for a town and school-wide equity audit. As you know, that was one of our goals, one of my goals we set in the beginning of the year. With the plan of getting that up and running for the next school year. And I didn't anticipate the three to five-year follow-up roadmap after that. But that's really exciting, as well as we had approved Wilson reading training for the next level of certification. The 13 special educators in our district moving up from level one to level two. Wilson's a probably one of the most famous reading programs and interventions in special education. So that was really exciting to have that done. And then school happenings. You know, it really, as superintendent, hits me sometimes. I know this, but when you have an opportunity to spend time with our students, I was just thinking in the, coming in here tonight with the school happenings, like what I've done in the last week. Been able to see our students. So first and foremost, I'm not going to repeat anything from Ben's report, but maybe add on just a couple little things. Ben, if you're still watching, which you're probably doing your homework, I mean, he could be a superintendent in training. He's got the report down here. But the National Auto Society, really great job by Peter, the, the officers did a really good job, along with the advisor, Amy Oteria. That's Peter Shadoni, Lily Crane, Emma, Pal, oh, I always, Palacimo, Sano, and last but not least, Katie Fitzgivens. Really terrific. Katie sent me a handwritten note inviting me and just like great kids and awesome job and a long work, Ms. Oteria and Principal Jackson really appreciated that. To the mock trial, like Lowell District Court, what a facility. I'm appreciative to Lowell for having it, but Kim Cooperstein, she's a parent and attorney. And Danny Oberlander is a teacher at North Andover High School. They're the two advisors. And it was just so impressive to see the work they do. It was almost better than watching court on TV. I mean, they were awesome. And our very own Nora gave the opening statement, just terrific. And I have to put in a plug for Charlie Cox. He was walking around that courtroom like he was F. Lee Bailey. I told him that. He said, I think he asked me who F. Lee Bailey was. Really amazing. I had an opportunity with many of you to go to Read Across America Day at the Franklin School. It happened across us, all of our schools, but that was a really cool day and I had a chance to read Dump Truck Disco in Ms. Swenson's class, the RISE program. Really terrific. And it made my day yesterday, the day before I came in. And thank you notes, like, and the communication was just like awesome. Today, I had a chance to sit in with Mr. McGravy. I mean, just when you think, like, we can't have more publicity around the terrific work that's happening in civics. We saw it with Ms. Lapierre from the middle school and Mr. McGravy, but he was at Desi today and I got to sit in on a presentation that he gave around civics in Massachusetts, but it was attended by folks from all over the country. So there were people, you know, on the call from Georgia and other places asking, can I get your email? Can you send me that PowerPoint? So really proud of him and the work that they're doing there. Ben, he, we were really close on the times, Ben. The boys' basketball game will be Saturday at 6:00 PM. And the girls is tomorrow night at
Nope, that is not correct.
Okay, I'm going to have to see Mr. Nugent for an update. That's probably the MI2A. All right. So we're getting confirmation, breaking news from the booth, from NACAM. So I don't know if I
Stay in your lane, Dr. Gilligan.
Stay in my lane. Well, I kind of wanted to give the right times. Okay. But I've had a chance to go to a few of the games and it's been terrific, terrific crowds. But a big shout out to Brian, the whole NACAM crew for televising. It, it's an opportunity to bring a game to folks that may live in another state. But I got to tell you, Coach Bags, I think he's one of our, he's definitely one of our track coaches, throwing, and Vince Sawicki, one of our parents. They do the play-by-play and they're terrific. I mean, really enjoyable. So the other night I went to the girls' game for the whole game and then I got to go to half of the boys and I went home and watched it on TV. And it was just a shout out to NACAM and those guys for doing that. Really cool. Additionally, I'll have more information going out, but we were able to, I had sent out a note previously, right prior to break about incident in neighboring locker room. We're on a swastika. And we will be having at NAMs and at the high school, two different sets. So at the high school, we'll have Holocaust survivor coming in. They'll be speaking with every student at the high school in grades nine through 12. And at the middle school, we had a staff member, Deborah Foley, who was able to connect us with a group, a Keen State. And so we'll be also doing something at the middle school, sixth through eighth. So I will have the dates and that information will go out. The
Can I just say something really quickly? I knew that the students, I think there were 30 or 35 just came back from DC. And they, you know, toured a ton of the museums and the monuments, you know, right, right there. And my son happened to go and, and I think we kind of prepped him because we knew he was going to the Holocaust museum. And everybody had kind of said how impactful and how powerful it was. And if you've ever been, you understand. And when he came back, one of the first things he said was like, you, you really undersold how moving that was. So that may be a very good resource to utilize because those students, you know, I can't speak for all of them, but, you know, he, he spoke of his friends who just came back and were just so taken by what they saw in that museum. And again, it's amazingly done. But those would be some of their peers who could be just a great resource.
Yeah, I mean, I'd echo your son's sentiments. One of the most impactful museums I've ever been to. So, and they're back. They're back?
Yeah, they came back last night.
Okay.
Yeah, Wednesday night, last night.
Awesome. I chaperoned that trip a few years back. It was really to, unbelievable trip. And last but not least, last Friday, I had a chance to be interviewed by one of my students I had a long time ago at the Thompson School for their journalism class, Caleb Roten. And just really a senior, really in thoughtful, insightful questions about education in America today. Really terrific. And I went back at the basketball game that night. I got the Scarlet Knight mascot. Can I get a picture with you? Can I? And I didn't know who it was. And I look over later and it was Caleb Roten. So I started my day with Caleb Roten. I ended my day with Caleb Roten. And I, really enjoyable. So just really kind of a snapshot in time, just really the remarkable things students are doing. And that's all I have.
So I have one follow-up to item D on ARPA update. And I wonder if Dr. Mealy, if you could just apprise the public of the status of the special ed review.
So the invitation for bids, you know, you can choose a request for qualifications or an invitation for bids. The scope of services is a, you know, a complete review. So we chose an IFB believing that that's the one that would get us the most responses. It's, they just have to meet our requirements and then they submit what it would cost. So that's been completed and advertised. And we'll have the results of that probably for the next meeting.
And then what's the next step after that? Does your staff or does Marcy and the administration choose among those bids?
So it's the, the choice is made and then you work out with the chosen firm, you know, a timeline. I'm not sure how long that will take. It won't take that long. They do this all the time. And we'll be able to share that as well.
Great. Any comments or questions?
Can I just do a follow-up? Yeah. Well, it's not really a follow-up. I'm just wondering if you could just update us. I think I saw right before break an announcement go out about a search committee for assistant superintendent. And I believe I saw one, I'm not exactly sure the timeline for it, but at the high school as well for an assistant principal. So there may be people who may have missed that and you may not know exactly what the dates are for some of them, but at least where people can go to get that information. Because I think it's a pretty quick process. And I mean, this is the kind of the right time for people who are starting to look for next year, but.
Yes. So, great question. So this is assistant, well, it will be shortly, assistant superintendent season. And it's fairly typical to be competitive with our timeline. But we sent a survey to the community with the ability to send a email or communicate with Greg Landry if they'd like to be on the search committee, to folks in our community. And we'll have a, a big makeup of folks across all of our schools. And so that's tomorrow. I'll be meeting next week with the committee on Wednesday with Greg Landry. I'm really pleased. I, I speak to a lot of superintendents. I've talked to a few from all over.
I'm really pleased, I speak to a lot of superintendents, I've talked to a few from all over. And there's places right now, for example, principalships, really difficult to attract one or two, you know, one that you count on both hands. In a lot of places, one hand, candidates. And we've had, you know, I think as of today, 35 or 36 applicants. It's a really impressive candidate pool. And so, and we'll interview the following week with the committee, the 20, 21st and 22nd, depending on how many we bring in. And then we will have them in to follow up, to meet with our administrative team, have an opportunity to meet with parents. We'll have a parent evening or a family evening, community night. And we'll have an opportunity in the afternoon for staff as well. And the great thing about that too, is it gives everyone an opportunity to go to one of these meetings or forums and provide written feedback. And that's really helpful. Then the folks will be in, you know, they'll be with me and my folks. And they'll do a performance assessment. We typically do some role playing and similar to what we do with our pretty extensive teacher process. So it, it's exciting. I mean, I am happy for Ms. Marks. But you know, I hired Ms. Marks years ago when I was at Thompson School in 2009. So she was, you know, she had a very long experience running collaboratives and is a special education consultant as well as a host of other areas that I didn't even know. I told more recently that she had done. But I'm happy for her and I'm looking forward to the process. It's exciting. You know, it says, I think, a lot about our community.
Dr. Gilligan, there's been a lot of headlines lately about attendance and attendance trends. And I wouldn't expect you to be ready for this tonight, but I do hope and Ms. Lynch in the role of chair, I'd love for us to hear our attendance trends at some future meeting.
Interestingly enough, I was looking at attendance the other day. Dr. Mealy. I mean, our trends the other day. So we meet, you guys know we do work, data meetings on our cycles. We do our work at Boston College on data cycles. But Jim, if you go to our shared drive. Well, you know, I, it was interesting you say this. This is national news that, you know, where have the kids gone?
What am I looking for?
Jim, I think I have a document called 2018, 2023, school attendance.
Has it been shared with me?
If, if we don't have it, we'll bring it next time, Helen. But I was really surprised, you know, currently right now, and we looked at the other day, I looked at with principals the other day. I looked at all students. I looked at high need students as defined by the DESE. I looked at LEP, REL, English Order students, as well as students with disabilities and socio-economically, socio-economically disadvantaged. And so we're really back up to almost that pre-pandemic level. Like I'm, it's within a percentage or point or so. So typically in North Andover, what you'll see is 95% attendance and above for those groups. And these were all really close. And they're really, you really saw that dip, you know, with COVID. And it's back up here. But I read something, I think it was the MASC had something about it. But I will have that for you.
Thank you.
One, one note, Dr. Gilligan. The, the reading event at Kittredge was quite fun. But officially, I think according to the students there, I was named the world's greatest reader. So just want to put that out there. You might have done really well with reading, but.
We'll do recognition next meeting.
Yeah. I got the world's greatest reader.
Congratulations, Mr. Hicks.
It's a good middle.
All right. And for the chair's report, we just have two quick items. Just remind everybody again, at the Educator Hall of Fame, we are accepting applications until April 30th. You can find the link online under the school committee's website on the North Andover Public Schools. And it's open to any former educator, administrator, member of the district who has been retired for at least five years. And then our second community chat will be April 1st. And is that at the library, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
At the library? And do we have a time for that?
I believe we have made a room reservation. I do not know the exact. Wait, we do. Like let me, I wrote it down.
Okay. If not, we'll get a time for next meeting as well.
I believe we said noon.
That is April Fool's Day.
Yes, it is.
And we're going to do it for real. No joke. Yes, noon.
Okay, noon on April 1st. Anybody's welcome to go ask questions. There'll be two school committee members there. And you can also submit questions in advance if you want to have answers at the ready.
Ms. Witsky, can I share a couple of things with the committee?
Absolutely.
So BRC had a meeting this month. They meet three times a year at this point. It was a really fantastic meeting. They had a presentation from the multiple needs classroom at the sergeant's school. And they shared communication skills and techniques and, and technology that the, that the students are using for, you know, to communicate with their peers. And this was a really well-attended BRC meeting. And I think that in some cases, virtual is better. We have not had a lot of participation from all the schools, you know, for a few years, even before COVID. But I think we had representatives from every school in the district. And they were really bouncing ideas off of each other. And you know, from that presentation, there were ideas that, that were going to be used in, in other schools. So it was a really, it was a really great and exciting meeting. And I just want to let, let you all know that NACAM had their public hearing for funding recently. And it was set up so that people could share their complaints or concerns as well as their compliments. And I'll tell you that there was no complaints whatsoever. And I think this committee knows very well, and the people in the booth know very well how thankful we are. And there were a ton of people that came out to testify. And there were letters sent by the administration as well as folks at the high school and such. So it's really a treasure that North Andover CAM serves our community. And lastly, I want to let you know that the board of directors from the CREST Collaborative is going to complete her term in, at the end of June, at the end of this fiscal year. And they're talking about how they're going to be replacing her and what kind of a search process they're going to have. There's a meeting next week where some of those determinations will be made. But I just wanted to let the committee know that as I'm starting to wind down my time, some of these are the last sessions that I'll be attending with this particular hat on, so.
Did you say it was the executive director who's?
The executive director of the CREST Collaborative.
Okay. You said board of directors, so I was confused.
Oh, sorry.
So the whole board is not resigning.
The executive director of the, of the collaborative has taken another position. She's actually going to be starting some special education collaborative work in the state of Vermont that does not have some of the work that we have up here. So, so there's going to be an opening there and the board will be figuring out how they're going to fill that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
And then I'll just add one more item. On, the PTOs are currently recognizing the bus drivers. This was the topic of discussion at the last PTO president's meeting. So I think that's something that a lot of families take for granted. They don't realize like we have our staff appreciation, our faculty lunches, all that. But we don't often remember the bus drivers. So the PTOs took it upon themselves and they're recognizing all the bus drivers and our own Lucy in transportation with some nice gift cards and flowers, et cetera. All right, old business, I think this is Dr. Mealy.
Yes, so as we had described when we interrupted Christine at the pub, it sounded like, at the last meeting. Oh, you weren't here. So there's no substantive changes to these policies. There's more housekeeping, making sure we're consistent with current, keeping them current. And nothing's changed since the last meeting. So we're just looking for the approval of them as presented.
So I'll move that we pass the policy D fiscal management updates as presented in the packet.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Picard, second by Mr. McDevitt. Is there any discussion?
So I guess it's just a quick question. I wasn't here for it, but I don't see any red lines, so it's.
Mr. McDevitt, I asked the same thing.
Okay.
And they were in last, last meetings.
They were in the previous one, okay.
You might have seen me flipping through pages tonight. I read through the policies earlier today. And then I, I called Michelle to ask like, why are there no red lines? And she said, no, there were red lines in the last one.
In the last one, okay.
And they've been updated. So they've all been updated and I did check through, but I, I forgot that as well. And it's, like you said, Dr. Mealy, a lot of times there's just like a reference or a comma or a word, a single word change.
Yep.
So they were fascinating to read, all, every single word.
Super fascinating, Ms. Hicks. I remember seeing the, the other red lines, but I, I thought maybe I didn't have a color copy or something here, so I was a little bit confused. So I'm, I'm.
No, unfortunately, I hadn't recycled last week's stuff. I am, I feel so successful.
You're so prepared, Ms. Picard.
Sorry. The only, the one substantive, slightly more substantive change was DJE. There's an additional paragraph about procurement that, that was the biggest change in the thing.
Right, and it was just making sure we were consistent with the state.
Yeah, or the state, sorry. Fascinating reading.
Are we ready to vote or is there any other discussion? All right, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes for zero. And we have no new business tonight. Is there any public comment?
Hi, David Brown, 35 Old Farm Road. I'm really glad to hear about the Holocaust education that you're going to do for the middle schoolers and high schoolers based on those events. Two suggestions, in case you want to augment or, or, you know, enhance that program. There's, you can contact United, it's called Combined Jewish Philanthropy, CJP in Boston. And they have a lot of resources that you can use for, you know, education on the Holocaust. Also, you may or may not be aware that there is a new congregation that started in North Andover in the past year. It's called Ahavat Olam, A-H-A-V-A-T, new word, O-L-A-M. And the rabbi, rabbi there would be a great resource for additional education purposes. So hearing that, I just felt I needed to make you guys aware that the CJP has, is a, it's a big organization. And they have a lot of educational resources. So they'd be another good way to, you know, accomplish what you're trying to do there. So thank you for that and that's it.
Thank you. All right. I'll entertain any motions to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Hicks, second by Mr. McDevitt. Ms. Picard?
Do we have discussion?
Yes, we can discuss if you'd like.
I just think Ms. Petrowski is going to be really jealous that we were out of here.
I'll let the record show it. What did I call before the meeting, Andrew?
So kept all, Dr. Gilligan down.
Yeah, I vote yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I vote yes for zero. We are adjourned until March 23rd.